To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be together today. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that you give us, the protection that you allow us, Lord, and for just the joy of fellowship and being together in an area where the common good is what's most important in our community. Lord, we ask for your blessing this evening as the council discusses issues that impact all of our citizens, Lord. They talk about the business of how we move forward as a community, Lord. We thank you for just that opportunity so we can be here and we can share our thoughts and opinions together, Lord. We just ask for continued growth and development and wisdom as we move forward, Lord, and we're just grateful for those blessings and the will that you give us each and every day. In your name we pray. Amen.
The council has been provided a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting, and I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and second, is there any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have the adoption of the minutes from the November 5th, 2025 workshop meeting and 13 consent items. Move approval of the minutes and consent items?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Here are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Now, we're going down. First off, let me go to public comment. Got a little bit out of order here. Now, this will be our section of public comment for this evening, and the rules in our public comment is this time this council has set aside during each regular meeting to hear comments from the public. This is not a question and answer session, but a time for you to express your views on city issues to the council. Each speaker who signs the public comment sign-in sheet may come to the podium when I call your name, and please state your name and address for the record to the clerk, and you may speak for up to three minutes, and when the timer at the podium and also displayed on the screen turns yellow, that is a signal that there's 30 seconds of time remaining, and you may wish to begin wrapping up your comments. So, I see that only five people have signed up for tonight, and I will... First on the comments is Dr. Richard Woodruff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Richard Woodruff, formerly residing or living at 101 West Railroad Street. I try to say that fast, three times in a row, West Wellroad Street. No longer live in this wonderful community, but I could not pass up the opportunity to come tonight. November the 18th, 2025 is probably just a typical day in the life of most people. It is not a typical day in the life of this city. Tonight, you see history and the end of an era. We come tonight, obviously, for public business, but we also come tonight to thank three people who have given service to this community: Brian Jackson, Robert Warden, Jerry Bittner. And Mr. Jackson and I have, over the years, with his mother still alive, had a lot of chocolate chip cookies. And Mr. Jackson, it looks like you're still finding the cookie jar.
We're working on that. What time to do that?
Mr. Warden, a native son, as is Mr. Jackson, a native son of Jacksonville, who has done tremendous work with the economic development and so many other worthwhile activities here in this community. And then Jerry Bittner. Mr. Bittner was born, I believe, in the Pittsburgh Steeler locket room. We actually have a picture of number 12, the quarterback for the Pittsburgh Steelers, Jerry Bittner. Now, some people say that's not true, but I've never let the truth get in my way of telling stories. Mr. Bittner came here as a city manager, and he still is the longest-serving city manager this city has ever had. And personally, I hope that honor always, sorry about this, always is yours, sir, because you have earned it. But after all those years of manager, he decided that he would become a city council member. You as the city council and the council before you that I had the privilege to serve with have brought tremendous progress to this community. You should be proud. The next council is going to have many challenges, but with the people who've been elected, I'm sure that they will continue. I was very pleased to see, I won't mention any specific name like the former chief of police, because he asked me not to mention that tonight, but seriously, be proud. Mr. Bittner, Mr. Warden, Mr. Jackson, I salute you.
Thank you, sir.
May the wind always be at your back and your sees calm.
Thank you.
God bless you.
God bless you. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Brent Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Brent Jones. I live at 206 Ann Street, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 28540. There's a matter before the council tonight regarding the exchange of city-owned property that is a substantial decision you all will make, and it has the potential to adversely affect more than 750 kids at present and moving forward into the future, the potential for thousands more. Before anybody can ever make a decision about where they're going in the future, we must first know where we are. To know where we are, it's wise to know and to consider, understand where it is that we have been. For 50 years, JAZA has provided soccer programming for the kids and their families in this community. Over the course of those 50 years, JAZA has become an essential fixture of this city and the broader community. For the last 32 years, JAZA and the city of Jacksonville have enjoyed a mutually beneficial and successful relationship through JAZA's lease of Woodlands Park. The inaugural lease agreement best outlines this relationship between the city and JAZA. I would ask and encourage each and every one of you to please reread that document, and particular attention to the language that recognizes and acknowledges the valuable service that JAZA provides to the city and its citizens. There's additional language in that lease also that is certainly worth your further The quality and quantity of JAZA programming today rests on two key pillars. Number one is community support, as evidenced by the showing here tonight in person. As of this morning, more than 1,000 signatories to a petition in support of JAZA's pursuit of a lease renewal at Woodlands Park, are more than 85 registered volunteers, and of course, our sponsors and local businesses in the community that are the lifeblood that allow us to do what we do. The second pillar is Woodlands Park. Any reduction, degradation, or compromise of either of those pillars jeopardizes the health and the viability of JAZA's ability to provide kids opportunities to play soccer in this city and in this community. The mission statement for the city of Jacksonville reads as follows: "To provide the leadership, vision, and oversight to ensure the responsible stewardship of Jacksonville's resources for the effective, efficient, and economical delivery of municipal services for today and for the future." Mr. Mayor, council members, I would argue that JAZA is certainly one of those city's resources. I would further argue that the 32-year relationship between the city and JAZA is the epitome of responsible stewardship. It certainly has delivered the efficient, effective, and economical delivery of those services. We hope and we trust that your wisdom here tonight will ensure the outcome of the meeting results in the first step toward the renewal of JAZA's lease of Woodlands Park and the relationship between the city and JAZA moving forward in the future. On behalf of JAZA, thank you all for your time, your consideration, and your service to this city. Here's to 50 more years of JAZA, Woodlands Park, and the city of Jacksonville.
Thank you, Brent. Next, we have Jane Sutton.
I'm Jane Sutton, 115 West Bay Shore Boulevard, Jacksonville, North Carolina. Mayor, city manager, and council, I'm speaking tonight, first of all, on behalf of the Bay Shore Estates Neighborhood Organization. As president of the organization, on occasion, I have brought before you concerns, but don't fret. Tonight, only words of thanksgiving and praise. Since inception of our organization, we have had several major departments from the city come and speak at our quarterly meetings. Example: city planning, transportation, city managers, Jacksonville Fire Department, Jacksonville Police Department, Parks and Rec, and several council members. In each meeting, information was passed, questions were answered, concerns and fears were calmed, and relationships with the taxpayers were formed. On behalf of the organization, I would like to extend our sincerest thanks to all who have come to support our efforts in making one of Jacksonville's first established communities an inviting safe place to live. Thank you for all your time in supporting what we do. Our last speaker happened to be Chief Phelps, who announced in that meeting the upcoming softball game between JPD and the Sheriff's Department. Jesse and I and a few others went to support JPD and cheer them on, and boy, did we cheer them on. What a game. Those who missed it, missed a great game. JPD took the win. I think we were the loudest in the crowd, but so proud to see you walk out of there with that trophy. To the members of the council who are stepping down, Councilman Bittner, Warden, and Jackson, thank you for all of the amazing job that you have done. You each have done representing with the city. You will certainly be missed. The Bible tells us for everything there is a season. We wish you all the very best as you enter the next season of your life. For the newly-elected and re-elected members, congratulations. We look forward to building a working relationship with you as well. Let the promises you made to be elected come to fruition for the taxpayers who put you there in faith. To Mayor Phillips and council and your families and all who are in this building tonight, thanks again for all you do. Many blessings to you all this blessed holiday season.
Melanie Marzett, 403 Alta Vista Loop, Jacksonville. First of all, I'd like to give a shout-out to the recreation department. They helped a friend out, a friend of mine that I go church with, with her yard, and she posted it on her Facebook page. She was very appreciative, so thank you for all that volunteer, for that effort. I come up here, I go out to New River a couple of times a week, usually definitely on Sundays after church services. I went past there this past Sunday, and my goal is to help as many people as I can in that area, or unhoused, or homeless. And the situation out there seems to be getting worse, because now they're into the abandoned homes that look worse that's out there. Some did have some complaints about police harassment. We still have those on Sundays that may not get a meal, receive a meal, and the weather is starting to change. And so, I did meet with the city manager several weeks ago to ask a couple of things, but one of the things that I would like to put out there is that, once it starts to get cold out there, not everybody can fit into that shelter. So, there has to be some type of remedy. I just wanted a little space to maybe keep some blankets and some socks and some stuff like that, so that when I'm out there, I can have this stuff, give it out, and then go. But that's just a short term. I just wanted to know if what we are doing to help those who are out there, and it's not just, we're talking about families as well, once the weather changes, they're out here, you're going to have more fires out in that neighborhood if we don't figure something out. And so, that's going to be a safety hazard for everybody that lives out there. And so, I would ask that we really take the time to think about what it is that we can do to get through this winter. Thank you.
I am Virginia Bryant Hill, Ward 4, 503 Country Club Road, Jacksonville, North Carolina. To the city council, the mayor, and citizens of Jacksonville, in viewing the city of Jacksonville's mission and vision statements, the following summarized response is offered. "Our city council is dedicated to providing leadership to ensure responsible stewardship of the discretionary fund. Responsibilities include the effective, efficient, and economical delivery of humanitarian service for our city's transitional neighbors, also known as homeless. Discretion is needed to address immediately the basic needs of homeless families with children, and will help our city councils to make Jacksonville a better place to live and work. With attentiveness to that specific family dynamic, we will allow them, excuse me, to become thriving citizens and exemplify the information on our website boasting of Jacksonville's being a caring community, showing civility, and embracing diversity. Community needs assessment has shown the cost of living for one adult, two children in Oslo County is $54,600 annually, which covers housing, food, and health care. Current demographics show our homeless population in Oslo County to be 80 adults, 11 children, SIS families with children, and eight veterans. This figure could vary if factors such as unsheltered versus all homeless are considered. With those statistics in mind, the basic needs for those SIS families would be $327,600. November is National Homeless Youth Awareness Month, and that was established in 2007. Jacksonville, Oslo County, North Carolina is aware of our homeless population. It is time to become advocates for action. It's time to assist our transitional neighbors. I am asking Jacksonville City Council and citizens, one city, our city, my city, to address this request immediately, to establish a volunteer coalition including faith-based and nonprofit organizations to achieve the national standard every homeless student succeeds in Jacksonville, North Carolina. Please appropriate money from the discretionary fund to benefit those identifiable homeless families with basic needs for 18 months. Thank you, Virginia Bryant."
In conclusion to the public comment, I know a lot of you come tonight because of your support for the JAZA program, the young kids soccer program. I want to say that it's very admirable of what you're doing, and your support is greatly noticed. We got a lot, several of the council members and management of the city got a lot of emails and phone calls and letters from some of you, and I want you to know that you're not unheard. We've, I've read every one of those emails. Amber, I read your email. I read everybody's, and your input is duly noted and will be strongly considered in any decision that the city makes. Just want to make that clear. Now, with that, I will go into Mr. Ray. You're going to take item number 13, which is the acceptance, or, I'm sorry, the...
14.
Number 14. What in the world have I got here? Okay. 14, exchange of city-owned property.
Thank you, Mayor. Give us one second. We're going to roll our slides. Mayor, the item we're presenting to council tonight is the concept of exchanging property with Oslo County School System. There are a lot of challenges that we've been presented with throughout these last few years to try and solve issues that come to us from different organizations. We have a lot of partners that we're working with, and we want to try and solve all of those challenges, and for the city council, you get a lot of things thrown at you at one time. So, some of these challenges we wanted to present to the council now are that the Jack Emmett Ballpark is owned by Oslo County Schools. The city of Jacksonville owns Jack Emmett Recreation Facility and the parking lot, the splash pad, the restrooms, and the basketball courts. That's what the city owns, Oslo County Schools owns Jack Emmett Baseball Field. The city and the Jacksonville TDA have been working on improvements to support that complex and the Jacksonville Osprey baseball team. Woodlands Park is owned by the city of Jacksonville. The city leases this land to Jacksonville Area Soccer Association, with that lease set to expire after a five-year term, December 31st of this year. Woodlands Park has issues with adequate parking and access controls, which can create concerns for emergency vehicle access to the fields. That's an area that we have been working on and we want to continue to work on. Recently, as part of the review of our current sports and athletic programs, the city hired Victus Advisors to complete a sports tourism feasibility analysis. Inside of that report, Victus identified the lack of sufficient quality baseball fields in Jacksonville. Part of that concern that we've had in working with the Sports Commission is how do we deliver amenities to the Sports Commission so that they can achieve success and provide quality programs here in the community? So, this is one of those areas that we've looked at, and the city and Oslo County Schools have been discussing how to use the land, both in the Commons and in other areas, to build additional fields and parking spaces. The last bullet point here is the Oslo County School System has expressed concerns about the lack of quality practice space for their high school sports teams. This has gone back to 1979, when the soccer program was created in Jacksonville High School. JAZA and the school system have been working on an agreement, but they haven't come to an agreement that they can work with at this point. So, those are the challenges that we have that we're presenting to the council at this time. The property that we're discussing is, the city-owned property is Woodlands Park. You'll see it on the screen. It's identified as 32.46 acres. This is the property that is behind Park Woods Middle School, referenced as the place where JAZA plays, for anybody that's in the community that Mr. Jones alluded to earlier. The two school properties that we're talking about are Jack Emmett Baseball Field, which is roughly four acres inside of a larger track that the school owns, and then on the other side of the screen, you're going to see an estimated 16 acres at the Commons. So, the Commons is our large recreation amenity that's been constructed here in our community. It neighbors to Oslo County Schools, so the school system has two schools in that area. One of the things that we would like to do is work in this area to create additional parking that can satisfy the needs of the Commons and satisfy the needs of Oslo County Schools, as well as create additional baseball fields. One of the concerns that's been expressed by members of council is, if we do a project like this, how can we be assured of a long-term commitment for JAZA with Oslo County School System? The answer is, you can't be assured of that, and that's part of the dialogue that we've had. Oslo County Schools operates on a year-to-year agreement, so that they work with multiple sports groups, and they allow them to access field space, but they do those agreements one year at a time, and they review them every year. So, the difference for us in this instance is, the last JAZA agreement with the city was five years. The school system offers year-to-year type of agreements. However, the superintendent, Dr. Chris Barnes, sent us an email that said, "We would continue to work with JAZA like we work with other organizations." This is the highlight of the email that he sent, that he wanted to share, not just with the council, but with the community. Oslo County Schools has a shared purpose with JAZA. You'll see on the screen, these are direct quotes from Dr. Barnes' comment. "We share the same kids and the same community. School-owned fields across the county are routinely used by various soccer clubs. JAZA currently uses Parkwood Elementary Schools and the access to Woodlands Park without concern." In terms of a future use agreement, if our respective boards approve a change in ownership, Oslo County Schools intends to enter into an agreement with JAZA for continued use of the Woodlands Park fields. The difference is, the city's agreements are a lot longer than what Oslo County Schools offer. Community use process, Dr. Barnes says, "Oslo County Schools follows a community use or rental agreement process governed by board policy based on JAZA's nonprofit status." He did not anticipate usage fees being a concern. Part of that dialogue comes back to, currently, JAZA does not have to pay a direct monetary expense to use Woodlands Park. What they do is, they maintain the fields, they put their money into the operation and maintenance of the park. Our park staff doesn't go out and maintain these fields. We don't fertilize, we don't stripe the fields, we don't mow the grass, we're not moving things around, we don't take equipment to them. JAZA handles all that as part of their agreement. And the last comment Dr. Barnes made is, "There's nothing in Oslo County Schools' current long-term plan suggesting that the property at the school would be used for anything other than athletic fields." Part of this dialogue is, where does the school system look to build? Inside the city of Jacksonville is not a place that the Oslo County Schools' 10-year capital improvement plan has designated for additional school space. Actually, the challenge has been a little different for the school systems, where they have the schools they think they need inside the city, they're seeing growth outside the city. And the last part that Dr. Barnes added was, "Woodlands Park's just one part of a broader, comprehensive effort that could benefit both the board and the council if acted upon." The only reason we share this with you is to say, back to the comments earlier, the community challenge here is to figure out how we satisfy the needs of all our partners. We're very confident we're going to get to that point, and we're not going to leave anybody behind. The goal is to find win-win-win-win solutions for all the partners that we have. So, what staff has presented to council today are these three options. There's a resolution inside of your agenda packet that's been published. So, option one is approve the land swap resolution with Oslo County Schools and authorize the city manager to execute the appropriate documentation. Option two, take no action on the resolution, but direct staff to prepare a six-month lease extension of the current JAZA agreement for consideration at the next council meeting, which would be December 2nd. And then, the third option is, you take no action. The challenge with the third option is, if no action's taken here, JAZA will still need some type of dialogue about a lease extension. So, it makes option three challenging, unless you simply say, move this to December 2nd and let that council discuss this opportunity. That's what I have, Mayor. I'd stand for any questions.
These options that you're mentioning, these are just options for tonight's decision as to whether or not to extend the lease or not.
Yes, sir.
There have been some other options that have been identified that will be looked at and presented when you get together or when we have a representation from all the interested parties come together to come up with a final solution for all this. Again, I don't think anybody on council here has any intention of displacing JAZA, period. It's just not, like I say, you've got all these kids, you know, we're not going to abandon the soccer program, especially when somebody else is putting it on, you know, is handling it. It takes the burden off us, as far as the city's concerned, not have to run a soccer program, because kids like soccer, so.
I hear it's a growing sport, Mayor. Apparently, they play it all over the world.
But I just don't want people to get confused this is the final decision, because it's not.
And Mayor, based on your direction and then some direction from Mr. Sosa, part of that dialogue is, if provided with... of that dialogue is, if provided with the extension, then the game plan would be pull together Mr. Jones, pull together the school system, the Osprey, the Sports Commission, and the city, sit down and talk about how do we satisfy all these needs together, figure out the issues that are there, all agree upon it, and then try and figure out a plan. Anything that happens of that nature, then we bring back to the council because the city staff doesn't act on those items. This has to come back to the council, just like it would go to the school board. So that would be the plan, Mayor, if given that direction by council.
Any other, any questions, council?
I have one. You may not know the answer to this one, Mr. Ray, but if JASSA was to do a one-year or whatever agreement with Onslow County Schools, do you happen to know, or maybe Ms. Welsh knows, would their status in that lease agreement for that land be automatically defaulted to second-tier over public school sport activities, or would they maintain primary control? Do you have any idea how that would look? And that's maybe too early, maybe you don't know, just...
In terms of my dialogue from Dr. Barnes, Dr. Barnes' statement has been, for the program that he's aware now how JASSA utilizes the field, they use the fields at different times. That doesn't mean that there couldn't be conflicting, but what I would tell you from our side is, the agreements are individual agreements and that they would lay out the parameters of how each of those agreements works. So the challenge for them is not to conflict during school use time. So for example, the high school boys and girls teams would practice after school and they practice during the week. If that conflicts with JASSA, then they would have to figure out a scheduling conflict now. So that's all I would know at this point.
Okay, thank you.
But it wouldn't be a similar lease to what they have with the city because if they're going to share that field with other people, why in the world would they want to maintain it? Why would they want the responsibility of maintaining it? It just seems like that would be a question.
Yeah, I think that's the point, Mayor, is it doesn't matter if the school system offers to maintain the land or not. JASSA says, the way that they maintain the land is the way that they want to utilize it because they want to maximize the play of the surface because of the 700-plus young athletes that Mr. Jones is referring to. So from my dialogue with them, it wouldn't be something they turn over. The school system utilizing it, if it's limited use, would still create similar opportunities as they have now. But we've not had those joint meetings. JASSA's talked to the schools. We've met with a couple of members of JASSA. You've talked to multiple members. So if that's an option, we would bring basically a nice little local soccer summit together to have that dialogue.
Definitely want them involved in that discussion.
Yeah, it would need to be tailored. There's a very high usage. Six days a week is used on those fields.
Seems to me like the best long-term solution would be for JASSA to figure out some sort of a funding plan where they could purchase that property and have to take control of their own destiny. As long as it continues to be a lease, you're going to be at the whim of whoever owns the land, whether it be us or somebody else. So that's my suggestion is that the powers that be at JASSA, put your heads together and start figuring out some way of perhaps coming with an offer, raising some funds to see if you can't control your own destiny at some point, so.
And these are things that need to be discussed amongst the parties that are involved. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir. I got a chance to talk to Mr. Jones, and one thing I began to understand is that JASSA took the place of actually recreation soccer. And kids play at all different levels. Even children that don't have the funds to play, they have something in place to make sure those children can play. So that's something that the rest of the community needs to understand. I believe in the mission of JASSA. I know that all over the world, you've got children playing soccer, as was mentioned, but some of those children don't have on socks or shoes. They might set up a pole as a goal, but they do find their way to actually wind up in great predicaments as their life continues. And so we can have the same opportunity here, you know, in assisting JASSA as they move forward, so.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to grant JASSA a six-month extension of its current lease agreement effective immediately upon the existing lease's expiration. This extension is specifically intended to provide the council and JASSA adequate time to explore and negotiate a long-term permanent lease agreement that will ensure JASSA's continued stable operation within the community of Woodlands Park.
Second.
Third.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Without any, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. Okay. Direction. All right. So we're going to go straight to our reports for this evening. And I'm going to start with Mr. Warden. This will be your last one. Make it good.
Could I defer until my wife arrives? I don't believe she's here. And I'd like to make sure she's here. Why don't we take a few minutes and let the...
Yeah, that's a good idea. Anybody who wants to leave now would be a good time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There she goes.
All right, we're back in order. We're going back in order.
I got hit harder.
Do it again.
Damn.
That thing's loud, ain't it?
There goes the podium.
Sound like a firecracker going off, dude.
You woke Mr. Bitter up.
All right, so we're good. Did it wake you up?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to go back to the reports and we're going to start with Mr. Warden out at the end of the table there.
You know, as I was thinking about what I wanted to say tonight, the one thing that struck me was what a blessing it is we have to live here in Jacksonville. Sure, we've got our problems, but we have a great police force. You know, we live in one of the safest cities in North Carolina. They are a model agency, one of the highest-recognized agencies in the country. You call the fire department, you've got somebody within somewhere around two minutes, just about anywhere you live in Jacksonville, and they have the highest rating from the insurance rating folks that you can receive in North Carolina and probably across the country. You get your garbage picked up, your garbage and recycling picked up. And I can tell you, on the 16 years that I've been on the city council, I've received more phone calls thanking and complimenting... I've received more phone calls thanking and complimenting our garbage folks, more so than any other department in the city. You flush the toilet. Your toilet. Toilet goes somewhere, and we don't have the diseases that come from, you know, bad sewage problems. And we don't have, we have a great water system. You know, we're not like Flint, Michigan, where those folks are still worried about drinking their water in their own city. And you have that to be thankful for. And I can tell you, none of that was by accident, not a bit of it. You see us up here, but what you don't see is the folks, you see a few of them, the city staff. We are a team. We're gonna succeed or fail together. The city staff or the council, we can't do this alone. And so it's important that we continue to do that. I would be remiss if I didn't thank one person in the city staff that has meant the most to me. And no slight on anybody else, but Ron Massey has, for some reason, I think he liked me. And he took me under his wing, and I know he's done that to some of the current staff members. But he took me under his wing and he talked to me and showed me what a city council person should do. And it's, you know, it's some of the things I was probably a little against. At times, I've been accused of being kind of conservative and tightwad. But as I, as I, as Ron worked with me, I sort of, I changed some of that. And I saw that investments help prosperity. And I think all of you would agree that we're living in a much more prosperous community than we were many, many years ago. So, Ron, thank you so much. Thank you for your kind words and your teaching me while, at the same time, with your friendship. Thank you for that.
I appreciate your comments, and it was a joint venture.
Now, when you go, you're gonna be missed, too, I can assure you. You are a mainstay of this whole operation, so thank you. To the citizens of Jacksonville, thank you for your vote. I hope you feel it was a worthwhile vote. I've enjoyed almost every minute of my time here. I would say that probably the toughest, and there's a couple people in here I won't point out or name, but when the New River folks started to become evicted, that was some of the toughest times for me. Because I guess I'm blessed. I live in a nice, warm house. I was going home that night after that they were talking about their evictions, and I went home to a nice, warm house. And that's made me realize how special that is and how much needed it is. And Melanie, I thanked her earlier for her heart, for her heart in wanting to help the homeless. That's so important. To my family, thank you for your financial support. You know, campaigns aren't cheap. Thank you for your love, your support, and most of all, for your vote. I have a fairly large family, so it was kind of nice having, knowing I had all those votes in the bag, I hoped. You didn't lie to me, did you? You did vote for me, right?
You'll never know.
You'll never know. No, they're gonna lie to you. No, and of course, lastly, to my wife, thank you. You were there at the beginning of our, when I started this journey. I guess I started 31 and a half years ago with the Water and Sewer Advisory Board, then the Planning Board, and now City Council. Thank you for allowing me to do what I wanted to do. Like I said, I've enjoyed almost every minute of it. I think you had another purpose. You got me out of the house. But you know, you've been my biggest fan, and I sincerely thank you and love you, and thank you so much. And of course, I give a lot of credit to God. I was a dumb young boy at one time, and through the grace of God, I guess I've become maybe a little older and certainly a little wiser. Maybe I should say it the other way. A little wiser and certainly a little older man. But council, I've enjoyed working with y'all. I guess what I've appreciated most was the fact that, by and large, with very few exceptions, we debated issues. We were concerned about the citizens of Jacksonville. We did try not to let our personal feelings for each other influence, good or bad, our votes. We always tried to fight and discuss issues. To the incoming council, to those that are returning, keep moving Jacksonville forward. You've got some good foundations to build on. We've been blessed with some good city managers. We've got a good one now. And we've been blessed and keep moving forward, so thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'm proud to have been here.
Proud to have had you.
I want you to know that I am still not in favor of adjournment tonight.
Please make sure you note that in the record.
Yes, sir.
I have a perfect vote on no's for adjournment for my term, so.
He just doesn't want to go home, is what it is. Councilmember, you done?
Yes, sir, I am, thank you.
Councilmember Edwards.
Well, I'm sorry to see my cousin leaving the council. It's an inside joke. We were at the polls two election cycles ago. People would come up from my church, "Hi, Cindy, give me a hug." You say, "You know, I'm Bob. I'm Cindy's cousin. I'm running, too."
I get it. I want one of your other two votes. And I said, "I'd remind them." They'd say, "Well, we're gonna give you a vote, Cindy." I said, "Well, I'm her cousin. I want the other ones."
Sorry to see my cousin leaving the board, truly. Congratulations, and we'll miss you. To Mr. Bittner and Mr. Warden and Mr. Jackson, your service has been, you know, selfless and, in all three cases, long-term. Nobody does this for the paycheck, I can assure you. So, thank you for your service. Thank you for all you've done. We'll miss you, but we'll keep the city moving forward. And you, of course, can keep us accountable, but you can come right back up here and talk in public comment. Tell us what we're doing wrong.
I certainly will.
All right. To everyone else, I will say happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy the holiday season. Thank you.
Councilmember Washington.
I would just like to say to Mr. Warden and to Mr. Bittner and to Mr. Jackson, we've had some challenges in the city of Jacksonville, but challenges that we could not overcome. And putting the citizens, as we famously say, we are a caring community, is always at the forefront. Mr. Warden talked about putting personal agendas aside and always looking out for the best of the citizens. And when you think about what's best for our citizens, it's always going to be what's fair, what's right, and what's just. And those three tenets are non-negotiable. Thank you, gentlemen, for your services, and good luck in your next chapter of life.
Thank you.
Mayor, put him to bed.
Well, I'm still surprised that this day has arrived in terms of terms ending. That doesn't necessarily mean my love affair with Jacksonville is going away. It's still there, still vibrant. I recall when some people asked me why I came to Jacksonville. And the little story behind that is that I was here to look over the community. I had applied for the job, and they asked me to take a tour of the city. I did. And Bill Hemingway, who was the city clerk at that time, took me around the town. And one of the places we stopped was the Public Works Garage. And one of the things I saw there, among all the other paraphernalia for public works, was a rusty snowplow. And I looked at that and I says, "That thing's not used too much, is it?" "Can't remember the last time it has been used." And to me, that was like an omen, a star in the sky. Take this job. It doesn't snow here. After coming from New Jersey, the snow falls. I was glad to take it. I took office on November 1987 on Veterans Day. Those of you who are quick with math, that means 1987 minus today's date, 38 years. I was also lucky that a new council took office at that particular time, led by George Jones, Greg Johnson, Carl Bejum, who took upon themselves, along with many other community leaders, to reverse the direction of Jacksonville. They knew we needed things. They immediately raised taxes, instituted infrastructure improvements, took note that most of the large cities experiencing growth had populations in excess of 50,000. So, the council agreed that we were gonna grow our population, and we immediately did, from 28,000 people to 75,000. Yes, we annexed Camp Lejeune. Development increased, other things that added to our attraction as a community. We won the All-America City Award and developed the Jacksonville Commons, along with a lot of other improvements. It was an exciting time. I decided to retire in 1999, thinking that, well, I might as well take my pension, get social security, and live the good life. Although I thought my life was pretty good up until that point. I decided to retire after 12 years of service as city manager, to enjoy life with my wonderful wife, my wonderful supporting wife, and enjoy a little bite of time with my grandkids. I was appointed to council in the year 2000, and I enjoyed serving immensely up until this time of retirement. Particularly enjoyed the relationships that I developed, and particularly enjoyed the living off the merits of the hard work of the staff, today's staff and past staffs, and the city council. One of my fine relationships is with His Honor, Mayor Phillips, who soon has set a record of his own for the longest-serving term as mayor. What is it, 20-some years?
Twenty years.
Twenty-something years. He used to kid me that I was his boss as city manager when he was deputy chief. Then he turned the tables on me and became mayor, and I'm his boss. But thank all you citizens, thank the council, thank everybody for making 30 years of community service possible for me. Actually, it's 58 years, including other cities. But I enjoy my time. I enjoy my friendship, and I hope to foster other community relationships as long as I live. Thank you.
I didn't need these when I first started.
It's hard to act as olive, but I just want to appreciate, or give appreciation to the three of y'all. I've learned a lot. So, I literally signed up for this job. I came in here a little bit different than most. Didn't really know what I was getting myself into, but these three, you know, with the others, you know, definitely supported me and helped me and taught me and taught me. And so I really appreciate, you know, y'all for doing that, and thank you for the years of experience that you give. And I remember, you know, me and Brian, first time we ever met, we met for lunch one day, had a nice conversation, got to know each other, so that was great. And Mr. Bittner, you always pick on me with age and stuff, so the year you came here was the year I was born, just to... I'll leave you on that note. Thank y'all for all your wisdom over the years.
You're a good kid.
And you still have more hair than me.
When you came, I was no longer the kid on the council, right? Yeah. Thank you for this opportunity. First, I would like to thank Ward One. That's where I grew up. That's where a lot of my family was, when I look back in time. It's where my mother was, and I got the opportunity to move two houses down from her when I came back. I had the opportunity to replace a former Marine. He decided to retire from the veterans of foreign wars. So, I, at the Camp Lejeune base, I got a chance to then call my mother, and I said, "Would you like for me to come home?" And she said yes, so I ran back home. Never thought that that would happen. I have some friends here and family, and a lot of us said that we're gonna leave Jacksonville. We wanted to go out and see this great big world, just to turn around again and always want to come back. Because there was always something, like a lot of us would say, "There's always something about the Ville." So, I was so glad I had that opportunity. No matter how much I tried to run away. And I came from an advocacy side, and I learned quickly that you can advocate, but there are other things involved with this world. But that advocacy side always told me that people were first, and that's how I tried to approach this. People first. I had an opportunity. I looked at Scott and... I can't, it just went... Dottie. Thank you, Dottie. Blame it on the age that I got from being on this council. Anyway, I got a chance to meet those two at a real difficult time. I, when I first came back, I always talked about how it's coming. I moved back from DC. I said, "It's coming." And that's the issue with housing. Started hearing about people from northern cities actually sending their folks that were unhoused down to some of the southern cities. And I knew that our woods would get a time where they wouldn't be able to hold our homeless in. Eventually, what happened with New River? We had actually took the time out to try to work out something where people would stay housed. Unfortunately, we couldn't make that happen because we fall under the North Carolina general statutes. They dictate our rules. And I always tell folks, if you want to exercise your right to vote, I mean, your right to complain or your currency to find the answers, vote. A lot of people don't participate, so we get what we get when we get it. Also, I have to clear something up. You know, I understand that souls of humankind are diseased at every level, as I learned from my experiences in communities amongst the lowest of the low in Washington, DC, to elected officials and the social elite that have bought and paid for them in Capitol Hill. This behavior has not permanently been assigned to a so-called race, and it travels between all social classes. This is why I return as a non-affiliated voter. No agenda, just disgusted with the worst of actions of humankind in Washington, DC. I saw how people got polarized as a result of putting a D or an R at the end of their name, or the beginning in some cases. I was so glad that this body could stay nonpartisan. Because we see, I mean, we might have our differences, like I say at times. Sammy would turn blood red. I would turn burgundy. I might not talk to her for the rest of the day, but we reset and come back tomorrow. Because sometimes we have different ideas of how our city needs to be run. We come from different perspectives. I mean, like Bob said, you know, where you have people that not only showed up, but a lot of them emptied their pockets as well. Because they saw an issue, unfortunately, that we didn't see, that it would come, what the issue was. And now we recognize that we need to make, dealing with homelessness and workforce housing, transitional housing, as we go forward. That's a priority. We sat down with our other partners in the community, be it nonprofits, be it, you know, private companies and other government entities, to make us understand that, listen, going forward, we're gonna have to do this together. There's not a lot of money coming from up top, of federal government, so we're gonna have to do this at this level. And also, we gotta better understand that, you know, everything starts at this level. We keep waiting for everything. We keep waiting for everything to come from the top and push it down on us. We got to start pushing up. You know, it's we the people, not thee or he or she. It's we. I always say, we the POTUS, we the people of the United States. So it's time for we the people to be the people. Let me quit, I didn't come here to, you know, sermon, but I've been blessed. I've been blessed at every facet of my life. I look at my family over there and they, you know, we've been close ever since from my beginning, you know? I carried them along with me. I look at my Kiva Clark look-alike over there, my sister Sherry. And I think about, we graduated 40 years ago, we also, but we grew up together, you know? I got a chance for, to go on to North Carolina NT and I was able to take some of them folks with me to the military and then to come back home. You know, we have, might have shorter relationships, but still just as genuine. And that message of love is always taken to me wherever I went and it's always kept me and it keeps me here. Yes, I miss Ms. Margaret Brown. I always say my mothers in political life, Ms. Margaret Brown, who served as a chairperson on the Board of Education and of course Senator Kiva Clark. She beat me up, she picked me up, she stood hard when nobody else was standing. And I know she would always protect me. That's the main thing. And I appreciate every bit of her from leaving me here in Jacksonville when I was supposed to roll with her down to see Sherry in Atlanta, to just showing me love all throughout my life. And I tell you, it's just, it's kind of overwhelming. I always said I ran for office, I didn't run against nobody. At this level, we ain't had no business running against nobody because like I said, it all starts here, it's our community. And you don't have to be elected to be, you know? Melanie, I'll go out there, you know, we talked about this situation for a long time. So we're going to be out there together handing out some of those blankets. But I also got to be thankful to those nonprofits. I don't know if some of the folks were here earlier, but those are the folks that were on the phone late at night or on the weekends that were giving people resources of homes. These are the people that often, that are not thinking, are unseen. There's so much that's going on when G10 shuts down or when everybody come out of their nine-to-five. There's a lot of work that takes place and that work continues to continue. And a lot of times folks ask, what can I do? I say something. You could, if some of us did just a little bit of something, just think what this world can be, you know? So I asked, I reach out to the churches and I say, you know, you don't have to start ministries, we already have ministry out there, they call nonprofits. So try to support those that are already supporting others, you know? Thank you to all friends, thank you for the staff, you all made me look a lot smarter than I really was. Thank you, I talked to Bob and I think about Dr. Woodruff. For a while, I was unable to drive because I found I was having a seizure disorder and I didn't want to wear my mom out all the time. So at times, there was actually Dr. Washington at first was taking me, then it became between Dr. Woodruff and actually Bob Warden. And I got a chance to really connect with that young man down there. And I was able to understand, yeah, I might have a position, but if I listen a little bit more, I might find out how we can actually come together. Because I've always been able to, I've worked with, people don't believe it, but I've worked with people that were in the Klan. But I came, might still be working with them, but I always come from a position of common ground. It might be gray in my beard, a goatee, and that's where we start. And if we keep on talking, we're going to find out we have a whole lot more. And I know you folks want to go home, y'all tired of seeing me run my mouth? So at this point, I say, thank you.
Never.
Thank you, staff. Oh my God, I will still be leaning on you, yeah, and I won't be Sid Kousma Jackson, but I might be Citizen Raising Kane. I might take that three minutes and 30 seconds.
You come on back anytime.
Okay, thank you.
Mine, real quick, this is a tough night here because we're losing three very, very excellent leaders of this city that are going to leave council. Bob Warden, so-so golfer, friend of mine, we associate a lot, off-duty and stuff, but we've come together on many issues that have been very important to our citizens and I'm still looking forward to having input from Bob on other matters. I mean, you'll still be on some boards or some panels, I think, at some point. You'll be contributing. You're not going to stop contributing, you're not just going to stop coming to these meetings that you don't want to leave, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Very good. But thank you, Bob, for your services. 16 years you put in here, you know, and I can say this for everybody sitting up here that's leaving, Brian, Jerry, Bob, the city of Jacksonville is so much more the better since you've been here, the service that you've given. What we've been able to accomplish together, you know, is we've moved Jacksonville forward in so many ways and we still got a lot of work to do, but we've knocked out a whole significant bunch of it, working together up here on this council. And I want to thank, personally, thank you for always being there, you know, and hanging in there with us and working together, you know? Just like with Brian, you know, the friendship we've developed, you know, we got a lot of respect for each other, even though we kind of irritated each other once in a while, but hey, we get over it. That's the thing about it. You can agree to disagree and walk away and still be friends and still be going to the next issue and be able to do it with an unbiased mind. That's the whole thing about it. Jerry, right here, I consider him to be one of my major mentors, you know, throughout my career, you know, as a city manager and as a council member. Guy's got a lot of knowledge locked up in there. And he's going to be a big loss to this council, especially to the management, because you give them a lot of advice, don't you? But anyway, I want to thank you guys again, all of you, and I wish you well, but I still hope to see you around a lot.
Thank you.
Can I just, wanted to add one little thing?
Please do.
Dr. Woodruff and I used to do rock, papers and scissors and the loser had to take you home, so.
I knew it had to be something.
You gotta get better at that game. Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity this evening to finish this meeting with our One City moment. The One City moment gives us the opportunity to say thank you to our members of our community all the time and to appreciate what we do really well. One thing I learned is even though I can stand up here and talk for a long time, I don't think I can talk longer than Mr. Jackson. So the good news is, just like Mike Canaro tells us, I only have a few slides, but these are really special slides, Mayor, so if you don't mind, I want to take the time for the One City moment to... I don't know who this guy is, but it says Mr. Bittner, so I'm going to go with it, Mayor. Mr. Bittner has been an excellent addition to our community. It's great to have a community where you bring people in from the outside and they add value. 58 years, it sounds like he cut it a little short. I would believe he could have went 60, 62 would have been fine, but if you've had enough, Mr. Bittner, then we totally understand. As city manager from September of 87 through April of 99, council in Ward Two, 2001 to 2007, as he said, elected as the mayor pro temp during that time, then re-elected as Ward Two in 2009, re-elected in 2013, re-elected in 2017, appointed after that as the mayor pro temp, re-elected in 2021 and continues to serve as the mayor pro temp because of that knowledge, skills and abilities that make our team building so much better. He goes back to that decision that Mr. Bittner said with the council. They made tough decisions, they did the job that had to be done and this council still pushes forward. He has served on so many different areas, the Board of Adjustment, the Environment, Energy and Natural Resources Policy Committee, Fire Safety Advisory Board, Onwasa, Onzo Civic Affairs Committee, Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Board, Regulatory Advisory Committee of North Carolina League of Municipalities, Water and Sewer Advisory Board, two-time All America City Award winner. You go back to the 1990s, Mr. Bittner's out there, he is breaking ground. This is what he did. Most of these pictures, just by the way, they were in black and white, but Lisa put some color on them for us. Mr. Bittner, all respect, I just want to say, we had to doctor some of the pictures to get them there, but this is the greatness of not only a working manager, but a working council member and an excellent leader. As he told us, he went from Mr. B retiring, right into Mr. B, the council member. And that's the value of that public servitude that he's given us. 2001 and then over here with the council in 2012, when we're standing there, what a great council that Mr. Bittner's worked with over time. You see here, once again, doing the service, planting a tree, always has a great smile. And then in 2019, it's this look right here, like what is the mayor doing that really shows you this is the classic. I don't know what he's doing either, Mr. Bittner, but we appreciate you keeping an eye on him as he's doing whatever it may be and we look forward to moving forward.
They're going to hole like a...
Thank you, Mr. Bittner.
Thank you.
Your service.
Brian H. Jackson, this is the best picture we've ever seen of you and so we're not going to do anything else except just take a moment to look at this picture because Photoshop has really done some really good work here, so.
I was scared.
Yeah, just pause for a minute. This is better than station identification. This is sharp. Somebody didn't have the H on there, but don't you worry, we got it on there. Mr. Jackson was elected in 2017 and did such a good job, he was re-elected in 2021. He's served on the Jacksonville TDA, which has taken leaps and bounds of moving our community forward, North Carolina Black-Elected Municipal Officials, Neighborhood Improvement Services Advisory Committee, Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, and as mentioned earlier, the Welcome Home Council and the Reentry Program. These are all things that he's dedicated time, energy and his resources in to make an impact in our community. Right here in 2018, Mr. Jackson showed he aspired to be as great as Mr. Bittner, so he sits in his chair every once in a while with his name tag. We all have to have goals.
He's real good.
And we appreciate that you have those goals. We're going to get you a copy of Mr. Bittner's name placard to take home, I'll probably frame it for you. It may be on your doorstep tomorrow, there's no telling. But here again, you see Mr. Jackson joining the team and a lot of pride and a lot of energy in everything that Mr. Jackson says because the compassion is there. Actually, the best picture that we have is this one here. It shows a dedication to Sturgeon City and Sturgeon City says that it's not just what we do in this community, but this was a difficult decision for this community to step forward in Sturgeon City. And as you stand here with the most important person in your world, that shows that dedication to this community. And then on the other side, you're out here, actually, I don't really know what you're doing, you're just with Michael LaCory? We don't know what Michael LaCory's doing either, but you're actually walking the 400 acres.
No, no, he's trying to find, they're trying to find my golf ball.
Which is why you would be with Michael LaCory at the time. So we appreciate you doing that for Mr. Warden because he doesn't mark a golf ball. But this is out here showing vision again and being out here on the 400 acres by this council saying, hey, let's move forward and let's make the hard decisions. These are two projects that you've dedicated time and energy to in multi-facets and we really appreciate that leadership, that knowledge and that support. Over here's on the Welcome Home Council and then on the right side, you're there at Jacksonville Station. Yet another project that took vision, that took support, that took time and energy to say, this is what we're going to do and you bring this team together. Once again, on the right side, you look a little stoic, so pensive, thinking about something, but the key is, it's success while you're a council member and moving our community forward. 2024, it's that smile. It's that look that you give us when you're sitting here at the council meeting. You've done the work, you come prepared, you show up and we're just happy to have you involved. National Night Out, National Night Out for you means that you're there every night out and we see that dedication as you're in the community. It's not one day a year, it's every day and we appreciate that greatly because of the passion, the energy and the compassion that you bring with you to the table.
Forgot to mention the time he spent on the Board of Directors for the League of Municipalities here in North Carolina.
I didn't forget, Mayor.
Right, good time.
President, North Carolina Black-Elected Municipal Officials.
Sadly, Mayor, I write my own material, so. Mayor, on this, for Mr. Jackson, some of you may recall, we had his best picture. Now we go to Mr. Warden. We went to the Wayback Machine, we get this right here, this is the start of...
It's obvious, I'm embarrassed about something, isn't it? I'm kind of red there.
Not even going to talk about it, but consistency. You talk about the years of service, 30-plus years that we look here, elected in 2009, re-elected in 2013, re-elected again in 2017 and re-elected one more time in 2021. And I would say the only reason you're not re-elected is because you said, I've done my time and I've served this community. With the support you have in the community, you can go for many, many years, as the mayor alluded to earlier. This is a testament to serving over and over again. Beautification and Appearance Committee, Onzo Economic Development, Jacksonville TDA, Onwasa, Planning Advisory Board, Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Board, Transportation Advisory Committee, all massive projects that this council has moved forward and Mr. Warden has provided that direction and that leadership time and time again to our team. You can see in 2011, when put together next to Mr. Thomas, they get real serious, they had to put thought into the process.
What are you doing to that child?
In 2013, he picked up somebody's kid and stood next to Flat Sammy, as he calls it. This isn't even the mayor. Mr. Warden keeps cardboard cutout of the mayor at home for pictures with the kids. The craziest thing I've ever seen, but if you stop by for Christmas, you'll see he's next to one of the Christmas trees in their house. The mayor's always there with the wardens. In 2015, he picked up two kids. And this poor guy took a picture of it just in case something had to be reported back. In 2018, we see Mr. Warden really show us that he's got style and that's how he serves our community. He serves our community with style and with grace, consistently showing up to provide that level of leadership and wisdom that some people may not think about. And that takes a special character. It's not just the knowledge and abilities that he has, it's the way of thinking through projects. A lot of time, we talk about Mr. Warden's ability to be a project manager, to think from a different angle, that's not just in terms of building things, it's to think through projects like tonight where the council listened to the community and takes an action based on what you hear. Mr. Warden's told us multiple times that one of the challenges being a council member is he's got a big heart and the emotion is challenging. And so we know this to be true because it's a fact of who he is each and every day. And the only downside to Mr. Warden is the fact that he roots for the wrong team in college sports. In 2022, you see him here with the guy called out earlier, Mr. Massey, and it's a relationship that's very special. And then in 2020, we recognized your longevity. So for the fact that you participate here, you look behind you, you see Dr. Washington, you see Senator Ozawa, you see the commitment that you make people smile and you give us a reason to do the things that we do. Can't get better than this picture right here. We appreciate all that your efforts and the time that you've served our community. 2024, he gives us that serious look because at that point, he said, guys, I can't keep doing it anymore. He did get sworn in that last time, but the fact is, you've served our community very well and we're thankful for your service. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Hey, I also appreciate you still wearing that same coat.
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor, Frankie's going to do a presentation here, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, thank you, manager. I appreciate you letting me piggyback in, I know you've had a long evening now, between you and a nice reception outside, so I'm going to keep it real brief. But we appreciate the partnership with the city of Jacksonville. If you all don't realize, they have two appointees on our board and have for many years since we were started, and two of those members are here tonight and are potentially coming off our board, although we have recently changed our bylaws and the board can decide to keep them on our board. But I just wanted to say thank you. First of all, we're going to start with the Honorable Jerry Bittner, in appreciation for your 20 years of exemplary leadership and service to our community as an Onwassa Director. So we've only been around for 25 years, and he's been there for 20 of those years, so I know it was a special project for him and his term as a board member and probably as a manager as well, you know?
Chairman, chairman.
Chairman for many years, he was the chairman when I was hired three years ago, so holds a special place in my heart for his service to Onwassa and the citizens of Jacksonville and Onzo County, so thank you.
Thank you.
Back up, sorry.
You're good.
Frankie, do it afterwards.
Jerry, I want to add that you're in my top 10 of smartest people that I've ever met through all my years of working and running into people, and I just, you're still in my top 10, buddy.
I want to say quickly, ditto.
Thank you, Mr. Bittner. And we'll move on to council member Warden, and I'll have to disagree with the manager, I like his tie and his choice of team, so...
See, see, that's why I like him better.
That probably helped me get a vote for the job, I think, so... But we appreciate, it's an appreciation of your dedication and leadership to our community as an Onwassa Director from January 2021 to December 2025, so thank you for your service. Hope you continue as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frankie.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Frankie. Thank you.
Very nice.
That's it.
All right, that concludes everything.
Oh, wait, wait, who's going to make the motion to adjourn?
I would like, you going to make the motion?
Rock, paper, scissors.
Rock, paper, scissors. Mr. Bittner. Mr. Bittner. I'm voting no. Make the motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Yeah.